Is mine working? Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. We'll call the order of special media to the Brandon City Council at 5:01 PM on May 21, 2020. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons, Mayor Lombard.
Here. Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons.
Anyone wishing to address the council may do so at this time. In person. At the council chambers or via Zoom. Hearing none, we'll go on to item number five. Resolution 14-20 repealing ordinance 606 and resolution 1320. Dana or Brian?
I'll make a couple of comments. Third time's a charm, right? So I did add a late amended version of the resolution, which is in the packet on page four. And in essence, what I'm proposing is that we take out the middle five items under the be it resolved section that really pertain to the businesses and condense it. And my reasoning for that is item number one talks about social distancing, which down below everyone is directed to do. And the other ones are all very interpretative or debatable. You know, as far as when is teleworking possible? When are work gatherings considered necessary? When is travel considered essential, et cetera? So the other concern with that is, you know, we're pinpointing some specific things, but then we're not pinpointing other specific things that the CDC recommends like wearing masks, for example. So I would rather see us leave it broad and, and tell people to follow the CDC recommendations, which we do down below in item number one. So I would make a motion that we approve resolution 1420 to rescind ordinance 606. And what's the other one, 1320? Yeah, peel 606 and 1320.
Your second?
To, right, right.
Motion second to approve resolution 14 dash 20 as presented secondarily in our email, I guess I'll say. Any further discussion on part of the council?
I don't quite get it, Dana. What's the difference?
So the first set of five items are telling businesses what they're urged encouraged to do, but it's very definitive. It's those four items plus social distancing, which is addressed down below. So we're pinpointing some of the things that CDC says to do, but not a lot of things that CDC says to do. So I just think it's putting us in a weird position. And then it's just very interpretive as far as, so we're telling people that, hey, you should allow your employees to work from home if possible. I don't know it's our place to, to do that. Maybe it is possible, but maybe it's not necessary. So I just, I think we're just getting into a really kind of in the weeds situation.
What for social distancing, does that, is that going to be left up to restaurants to decide what, how they want to do that with, you know, like the six feet between the tables? I've had that question. Are we mandating that? Are we recommending that? What is, we're talking about it, but not specifically.
We would be recommending that they follow the CDC. And of course, they have other entities that they would need to follow too, whether it be a franchise partner or the Department of Health or FDA or OSHA or whoever else they have to report to.
Other questions? If not, Christina, call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries, very good. Item number six on our agenda, we have some staff recommendations to hire at the golf course. Pro shop assistant Riley Dunkinson at $11 an hour. Cart techs Helena Hendrick, Sam Olthoff and Connor Peschel at 9:30 an hour. Maintenance people Anthony Ackerman at 11:10 an hour. And Chase Grody, Kayden Smith and Izzy Stone at 10:80 an hour each. And the termination recommendation of the following Mason Stark, Braden Dibdal and Savannah Swanson. We can have a motion to approve all of those recommendations.
So moved.
Motion second to approve the recommendations as presented in your packet. Any questions? Not Christina, call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons.
Okay, moving into item number seven, which is entitled Benefits Work Session. Discuss the benefit program with the city employees. Dana?
I see Casey here. I guess I'd like to call on him and kind of have him give us an update on where we're at with the quotes.
Got it? I know the, I know the drill. Okay, yeah, so we're, it's that time. Just an update on where we're at with the health insurance and the renewal. Obviously, you see, we've got the renewal in. That's been in for a while. We did receive rates back this week from Avera and Sanford. I think they're both included in this packet. We're still waiting for UHC United Healthcare we're waiting on, and we're waiting on Medica. UHC is having a little holdup because of, we've had some issues with applications not being completed, signatures missing, stuff like that, additional health information. So that's kind of holding those up. So we're waiting for that and some retiree applications to come in on that as well. So once we get that, hopefully they'll, they'll get us out some rates soon. Medica is, I think, hoping for this week. I'm not holding my breath, but we do have those. You can see, I don't know if you've looked at it, the, you know, the Sanford rates. When you look at it compared to where we're at right now, now we designed these to basically mimic the plan that we have currently. Okay? And the Sanford rate is, is quite a bit higher. It's higher than what we, our renewal came back in at. And they do offer some, some skinny down as far as network options that are included in there as well. And then the Avera, Avera quote came in quite aggressive as we, I anticipated on that. I thought that Sanford would be a little more, would be better than that, but.
The Avera quote came in what, Casey? I didn't catch that.
They're, they're, they're pretty aggressive. They came in about $10,000 less than our renewal did. So they're like 46,000 based on the same benefit design.
Okay, thank you.
And that's 10,000 monthly, 120,000 less. So all the same coverages as we have now without having to make any tweaks?
Correct. Obviously, the biggest difference just being the closed network, you know, using, having to use Avera facilities. That's the biggest difference on that.
So if my math is correct, that number times 12 is 552,540, which is under budget. That's pretty cool.
Okay, remind, it's 567, is that our budget? Right? Is that, that's our goal, right? Okay.
So I, I like the Wellmark plan because it's open network and I think our employees really appreciate that. I have no qualms about staying with Wellmark if we can hit the 567. And I'm really quite firm on that because we voted on that many months ago that that's what we were going to use as our starting number. We're not very far off, it doesn't look like. I know that we could go in and have another plan and save some money. I don't know that I want to do that to our people if we can avoid it. As long as we can stay in the number, I don't care if they pay for it, we pay for it. I don't really care anymore. I just want to use that number. That's where I have come down to. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Barb, we have options to do that within Wellmark, I think, or at least get close. We go into a, so if we make any changes, as you know, over the years, you know, if we go 5% more in deductible or, or cost sharing or anything, we lose our grandfathered status, which is not a big deal. We can, we can go into the mid-sized market with, with Blue Cross. It's going to open up a lot more options for us as far as the number of plans that we have access to, to choose from. And also, we could, you know, depending on what the council decides, you know, we could, we could maybe offer multiple plans. Maybe one plan is equal to what we have currently. And then we offer maybe a higher deductible plan. And again, that's all going to depend on what the council decides is, is if there is any cost sharing or not going to be involved. But I think we can get there, get close, staying with the Wellmark family.
So I have a question. So you said that there is an option to do multiple plans? So we could grandfather employees in now or no? My, yeah, my mic's not right.
Well, what I mean by the, on the grandfathered is that our plan that we currently have was implemented during the, the ACA enrollment or enactment in 2010. And at that point, it said, hey, you can keep this plan going forward if you don't make changes to it by more than 5%, okay? Meaning that if we don't change that plan, if our, our contribution is 100% right now. So if we don't change that by more than 5%, we can keep that grandfather status. Or we don't change the co-pay maybe from $10 to $20. We can keep that, we can keep that, that status. And we've kept that obviously for 10 years. And it's really treated us very well. I think if you look at our renewals over the years, we've done very well with it. But once we do make those decisions or if the council does that, it's going to, it will force us into that mid-sized market, which we're still classified as a small market or a small group, okay? Which is really 50 and under. We really have 51 plus when you're really taking all of our, the employees here, whether it's full-time, part-time, seasonal. And that's how they, they, they judge that. Now, with that being said, again, it doesn't, it doesn't drastically affect us rate-wise to do that, to go into that mid-sized market. Again, it will offer, and when I say grandfather, that's what I'm talking about, is that plan. Not necessarily the employees being grandfathered into a new plan. Wherever we decide, those employees are going to be able to follow us. Does that answer your question, kind of? Okay.
So do you see, Casey, that that's changed over the years?
As far as?
Being able to go into that mid-market?
No, I mean, uh, no, I mean, we, you, you eventually, groups just get forced into it because they maybe grow in size. They may have started, just like we did when we first started. We might've had, you know, 15 or 35 employees here that worked. And so they're in that small, they're in that small group market. They're really, I don't want to say there's really a disadvantage going to it. They're both going to take into account our, our claims history within this group. If we go to that mid-sized market. You're going to pick up benefit-wise, you would pick up zero co-pay on your preventative services. So anything that the employees do preventative-wise would be at zero cost to them. Where now, it's not a huge deal, but then now they're doing a $20 co-pay. Yeah, $20 co-pay for those services. The other thing that it would do is it would make everything go to your out-of-pocket maximum. So their drug, their drug co-pays, their deductibles, their office co-pays, all that would go toward their out-of-pocket maximum, where that's not the case right now. It's mainly their deductible and coinsurance that goes to that out-of-pocket maximum. So they do gain some benefits too by going into that. Again, the multiple plans, I think, is a, is a benefit. If that becomes an option, that's something that we can do. We can offer multiple plans. Yeah, I think, let me just check my notes here quick. Yeah, the, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I talked with Wellmark today, actually. So they are, we think, or they think that the, that grandfathered block of business is shrinking. Meaning more people are either getting forced into other market segments, meaning large group, or they're going to an ACA qualified plan. And so that's shrinking, so. And we can't say this in a certainty, but maybe that becomes more volatile because there's less bodies in that block of business going forward for underwriting, if that makes sense. Where this, this, this mid-market is becoming, there's becoming more bodies in it. And so that hopefully tends to stabilize and help things when renewals come and, and that. Again, I don't want to try to push you one way or the other. I'm just trying to give you the advantages and disadvantages over where we're, where we're at currently.
And that middle market would allow us a lot more options and choices within the plan. And if there's other ways down the road, if tweaks are needed later to make the pricing better, then you've got those options to implement spousal requirements or what have you. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around like, so without knowing the other couple of companies where they're coming in. So you've, you've got the potential to tweak the Wellmark plan, which would probably come with some cost sharing to get, I mean, if we're talking lower at 120,000, that's probably going to be inevitable. Or you've got kind of the same plan with a network. So if somebody in the network plan goes to a doctor that's not in the network, which, so we're probably half and half that aren't going to like Avera. So for those 50% that aren't going to like Avera and they, they, and whatever percentage of those 50% aren't going to switch docs or whatever, what's that look like to them? And then compared to every employee having to pay premiums to stay on the Wellmark plan?
Okay, I'm gonna see if I can, so I think what you're, I don't know, I can't, yeah, yeah. So Avera, if they, I mean, if you're gonna have to, you know, especially, it seems to affect the women more than men generally in those plans because the women like their OB doctor. And generally, they don't like to change it if they don't have to. So they, that, that's, that's a big effect. But yeah, they have to, they would have to find a doctor then that's in that, in network with Avera. If they're, if they're used to going to Sanford, they're then going to have to find a, an Avera doctor.
Is there not a network option where you pay extra?
There, there is, they would, yeah. They could be subject to paying versus if it's 80/20, they could be doing 60/40, you know, on that, on a, on a network option. So yeah, there could be more cost sharing involved for them to do that.
If they really, really want to.
If they really. Correct. Yep.
Am I reading the right, so I'm on page 19. So if I look at Wellmark, just to make sure I'm not, um, the 573, is that what we're looking at for the estimate?
Yes. That is, that is what you're looking at for what the city would actually pay.
Okay. So that's the number I'm looking for. So I'm only off like 7,000 bucks.
Yes, but you also have to take in consideration that direct pay too. So if you look at what's budgeted for health and direct pay, that total number is 606. If you look at Wellmark, what the estimate is to the end of the year, plus what we estimate for direct pay, you're at 593, which is under budget.
I'm only concerned about the health premiums. I don't care about the 45,000, that's fine with me. So I'm just looking at the health premiums for next year. So the 573, is that a number? I see there's an asterisk. That's always dangerous when there's an asterisk.
Well, it's, it's an estimate. So I'm taking what we currently have for employees on the current plans that they currently have right now. If somebody changes plan, changes to employees plus spouse, if somebody, if we get a new employee on, that isn't taken in consideration. So it's the, what we currently have right now.
Okay, with the increase. You put the increase in there, okay? Well, I'm pretty happy with that number. I think that's a good number.
Well, the, because I had emailed Christina a year ago and asked, what do we spend with Wellmark in 18? And the number was 567. Because I agree, I think we need to focus on this piece of it. Because it's more than that because we buy debt, buy back deductibles. And that's on top of the 567. That's not, yeah, so.
So what little tweak could we make to that plan to, to get me to my magic 567? It's not going to be paying premiums.
Pardon me?
It's not going to be paying premiums. It's not, it's not that much. Can't be much of a tweak.
Yeah, we would have to more than likely increase deductibles, you know, to do that, to get to that, that number.
Number 6, 650,000, right? 54?
Are you coming in with Casey? Are these the right numbers or?
Well, currently, your current, with the, with the 7% increase, okay? The monthly, according to the renewal, okay? That we could be off if there's been an employee added or deleted. It's 54, 190. That's your monthly premium.
Okay. Update of the 7%. And then that calculates, calculates to 650, like 280.
Yes, but you have to keep in mind that we have three retirees on there that do not come out of the budget. And we have several people who pay either 5% or 25% premium that do not come out of the budget. So the 573 number that I came up with is what the city will actually pay out of the budget.
Let me just ask, was that based off of last year's numbers? Because we have like five less families on this year's.
It is based off what is, what we have currently as of April. So whatever everybody had for April, which is what actually Avera has on page 18. Employee only is 14, employee spouse is six, employee children is two, and family is 17. That's what it's based off of.
Casey, I have a question.
Yeah.
Just going forward, because one thing with being on some of these meetings and hearing the employees, I don't like the fact that if, and I'm new, and this is my worst time doing this, that they always going to get a fear in their stomach every year when this comes to, you know? And I get it. I, I, I understand it. Insurance isn't, it's not fun. It's not, you know, especially when I think they have a wonderful plan here with the city. But is there any way around that with, with stabilities unless we make, or is the only way is if premiums are paid? Like, I mean, I'm just like, is there any way to like calm the waters for a couple of years? I just, or is it just, or is this what we're gonna do?
I would, I would argue, I don't want to say the word argue, but I would say that a 7% increase in this, in this market is very good.
Yeah, it is.
You know? And, and so that's how I would, but as far as, you know, we've seen some decreases here over the years on premiums too, to calm the waters? I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't have a good answer for you on that. I mean.
What if we use that as our base number? That is our base. Every year, we reevaluate and we increase it by the medical CPI for our budget number, okay? So then, you know, if medical CPI goes up six, and we, that, you know, we would cover that. If it goes up eight, then the plan is going to have to be tweaked somehow. If it goes up only four, maybe there's some way that we can return that money to the employees. And that way, we would have a base and a, a reason as to how we're doing things. Because in the past, we just said, oh, it's up 10%, we're gonna cover that. I want something that we could base it on. Would that make sense or some variation of that?
I like that, Barb. Because I feel like as much, we have wonderful employees and I value everything that they do. And I think, and I don't want to have that fear in their stomach, but then you, as counselors, we have 10,000 citizens that we have to, and they're taxpayer dollars that we have to account for too. But I like that idea of kind of having a baseline where we don't have this, because I don't like doing that. I mean, I don't like that to our employees that they have to worry about it every year. So I, I don't know, I like what Barb said, if we kind of have some kind of guideline to go by. And, and if it, like, like this year it's 7% if, then maybe we won't even have, have to have a discussion about it, right? Like, I don't know.
What?
Well, this year for 2021, we had voted to use that number, yeah. But then beyond that, 2022, and we do that budget, then it would be the medical CPI.
I will say that the committee has not gotten together for a while because we were waiting on quotes. So we haven't gotten together. We don't have any recommendations because we haven't seen those quotes. Barb, if you do, if you use the Wellmark current plan right now with the quotes that came back, and you charge 5% to everybody across the board, you would make more than enough of the 7,000, $6,000 to $7,000. I can run some numbers and see what that percent would be. 5% would be, like I said, way more than what you would need. But we don't have, the, the committee doesn't have any recommendations because we haven't met.
Well, I'm not trying to make money off of it either. So I just am interested in getting it to that number. So if it's 3%, I don't care. Or if there's, if it's more palatable to change the deductible a little bit, I'm okay with that too. Whatever they would prefer, I guess.
Okay, I've done all the talking, so somebody else talk.
I'm in agreement with you, Barb. I think there needs to be a change made.
How do you like my form of them?
It's fine.
He's a man of few words. He's a man of few words.
A question back to the retirees, because if the new plan is 650,000 and our budget is 567, I mean, we're off almost 100 grand. I mean, are all three right retirees on family plans, or, I mean, it just, it seems like a big amount of difference.
Two are on plus spouse, one's on single. Yeah, the, I was just gonna say, the, what I have with what the current employees have and then current employees pay, so each month, $5,345 is getting paid by either the employees or the retirees. That would be the July 1 renewal.
Okay, so let's just get this moving.
And you gotta remember Dana, that your number is for a whole entire year. We're only paying for July through December with this new rate, it's only six months renewal, that's it.
I went off your 583 and the difference between 573, yeah, that's where I front of like 66,000 difference, and that would be that by pre-retiring plans.
Yes, but what number are you using, are you using the current renewal of Wellmark times 12? You can't do that. January through June is last year's renewal. For this year, this budget year, January through June 2020 is last year's rates. July 1 goes to new Wellmark rates, so you only have six months at this renewal rate.
So get this party going. Is there interest in saving money and going to the Avera plan, which they're a network? We'd save, you know, some money, or is there more interest in staying with the Wellmark plan and tweaking it a little bit? Let's at least give Casey that guidance.
Um, where did this survey come from on the back page? Is that what you guys did?
We sent that out to the employees.
Is that part of the?
Yeah, we had like.
Discussions we were having?
With our work commit, or with the, the benefits committee, that's, those were the priorities, and that's what we were kind of chose to do, is get priorities of what the employees wanted, and then as a council, look at the plans.
Because it appears as though the most important thing, or one of the very most important things, is having an open network, so I would probably be against the Avera plan. I would much rather try to figure out a way to tweak the Wellmark plan. By offering multiple plans, I do think there might be a better way of getting there. I mean, we could certainly, um, offer multiple plans with multiple options. Some, some could offer higher deductibles, some could offer different, but I mean, as long as we can offer multiple plans and still come up with our number, I think we probably would be better served.
I would agree with that, and I would ask Casey and/or Brian if there's staff that needs to get paperwork completed so we could see other networks, we need to do that.
I, I want to mention on, so, Tim, on your, gotta say this carefully, if you, to do the multiple plans, okay, you're gonna have, you're gonna want to do cost sharing of some sort. Because it would not make any sense to offer somebody a $3,000 deductible and somebody a $2,000 deductible at your current status. Nobody would take that, you know what I mean? Is that, so, you know, I just want everybody to keep that in mind on, that that would have to come with some kind of a cost sharing if that's what you guys decide to do. That's gonna have, I mean, it wouldn't make any sense to do, to offer multiple plans without that, I guess is my point.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
And maybe we need another, another survey by the employees, that's, I guess, the other thought that I have. Because when I look at the list of priorities, when you take out the ones of adding totally new types of coverage, like disability, vision, dental, if you take those out of the mix, the six that remain, I mean, and, and hit the budget, I mean, Avera hits all of those except for the network one. Um, so I mean, that's just something to consider too. And I go back to the, you know, which is the, the lesser of the two evils, um, having everybody pay premiums potentially, uh, or having that network imposed, which doesn't necessarily mean you have to give up your doctor. As what, so with the Medica and United, um, we're expecting those this week. I mean, do you have any, any feel on how they're coming back or how aggressive they're being with?
I, you know, UHC. UHC declined to quote us last year based on our, based on our health history. So I don't have great confidence that they're gonna come back, you know, with a great rate. But I can't say that with any, you know, sit here and look at you and say that, that's the case either. Medica, complete wildcard to me, we're, this is, we're working with them brand new. So I, I, I don't have experience to tell you that what their rates look like. They've, uh, I think their large group business is gonna be better than their small group business, so we've got some hope there. But I, again, I can't sit here and look at you guys and tell you that they're gonna be what they're gonna be.
Specifically, is the hangup from getting a quote from them, because we talked about this work session a long time ago.
Yep, so the UHC is waiting, we've had some, we had some applications that weren't completed. Uh, they either weren't signed, or there was missing health information that wasn't, you know, uh, disclosed on the application, so we got those back to the employees. So that takes, that took some time, we've, we've still got some, we've got those back. We've still got some, some issues on some of those apps that aren't completed. Um, and it just slows it down, I mean, we just, they, they will not proceed without that information. So, some of these companies will take, they will take a pure census, uh, based off your census, and then any type of health history, like we, we present them with any, all the health history from Wellmark that they will develop, that they will give, which is your claims, uh, your losses, basically your loss ratio. They'll run it off of that. UHC is, they're not that way.
So, I think it, um, obviously would be important for the employees to know what the cost, the deductible cost would be to keep the Wellmark, if that's the way we go, or move to Avera. So if I look at the Wellmark, the family, the full schmear for next year is 2,000 a month. If we go 5%, that's 100 bucks a month. So it could be somewhere 100 or under. Because I think there's a fear out there that it's gonna be like 500 bucks or something, and, and of course, I don't want that to happen. 100 might be manageable for people, and that's the full plan, I don't know how many have the full plan, but just as an idea.
No, and I was gonna, I was gonna reiterate that actually too, that just, that we still, you still have that option to keep the grandfathered plan by doing a 5% contribution from the employees. You could still do that, keep the grandfathered plan, if, if that gets you where you are wanting to go.
Do you think we've, do you think we've outgrown that plan? I, I mean, times change, is there, would it be better to give them something else? That's when you were talking about the no co-pay for, um.
That's going, yeah, that's, that would be if they move, if we lost that grandfather start and we went into that midsize market, yeah, we can pick up a couple of those things. The plant, plan is not outdated by any means. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's a fairly rich plan the way it's designed, there's no doubt about it. Um, uh, so I feel good about that with, with the employees, it's a great plan, you know, I think it suits them very well.
That's what you have too Casey, if, if we do the five, if we do the 5%, it's only like $100 for the family. Because like I was looking in like Mitchell and Brookings, I couldn't find Gankton, but they're on city employees pay, I think 25% is what I found of their premiums. So even 5% is really quite low, which is more reasonable if we have to go in that direction, okay? Just wondering.
Casey, if the, if the big hangup here is, uh, just the $7,000 per year, couldn't you go back to Wellmark and, uh, try to, I'm dead, I'm dead serious on that Casey.
Oh, hey, I got you, I already beat you to the punch Paul, I've done that.
Uh, Casey, I run a $6 million premium, and I beg and plead every year.
Yep, I, actually, they did it, they actually lowered it Paul on the, on the midsize. They don't on the, they don't on the, uh, small group, they will not budge on those. But they did actually, yeah, it's actually, if you, and I don't, I don't think those are in the packet, it's actually about a percent or a little more difference, so it's not a lot, but they did move that number on the, on the midsize quote that we have. So I, and I, so I did do that, I did ask for relief on it, so.
Okay, uh, because, I mean, we're, we're talking about 39 employees or whatever we have, that's $15 a month per employee for $7,000.
You know, the other thing that would, you would do, or I think you should do, would be then to pre, if you did have a contribution percentage, is you would pre-tax that. So that would help save the employee, I mean, it saves a little bit, it's not, we're not talking huge dollars here, but at least it saves the employee and it saves the, it saves the city, because there's matching social, matching social security there is what you're saving on that pre-tax. So you would, you would take that 100 out and take that out of their wages or whatever, if they're, you know, let's just use around 30,000, take that out, so now it's 29.9, and they're taxed on that versus on the full 30. So, I would suggest you do that, that'd be, you know, one way to trim even a little more fat off of that and still be a benefit to the employees.
I'd suggest Casey, if you were, if that was your whole intent to get down to that $7,000 for you to mess with the deductible or the co-pay or something, you're causing a lot more problems than what it's worth for $7,000 a year on a half a million dollar premium.
Yeah, and I'm not talking.
You're, you're better off with a employee contribution of, like I just said, $15 a month. Pre-tax is down to 11.
You picking them out?
That's $108 a year.
Or does it have to be a percentage, it can't be a $15?
Yeah, as long, you know, Dana, as long as it fits in that 5, you know, then you, you know, whatever, yeah, as long as it fits in that 5%, yeah.
So what, what direction do you want him to go? Deductible, pre, cost sharing? Where, where do you want him to go with that?
Casey, where he feels he could find it the easiest.
Yeah, I mean, well, it depends, again, but what do you, what do you, are you talking 5%, are you talking 10%, are you talking about? I mean, that's, our rate, the rates are the rates, you know, so.
I'm just talking, as, as the mayor said, the 7,000, that's all I'm looking for. How we get to that number, I don't care how we do it.
When you, when you asked them for a little relief, did you know it was $7,000 that we were working for?
No, no, I didn't know that.
Now, would that make a difference?
Could, I mean, I'll, I'll certainly, I certainly take it to them.
I mean, right?
You know, for sure.
Only $7,000 and I have to really know the plan?
All they can say is no, right? You know, so, yeah, I can definitely, no. No, I didn't know that, Tim, that, what the dollars we were working with.
Because I know if I just ask for a link of relief from people, they would be like, no. But if you have a number of time.
Definitely will take it to them, you know, this isn't a, dealing with them is not like a car deal. You know, but, uh, we'll definitely, we'll definitely take it to them and, and ask them for that, you know, if that's the number. Or to say, hey, can you get here? If they can, they can, they can't, they can't, so.
So the 2018 number of 567, I have a note here that that actually included the retirees and Kim Surwicke at the time from the chamber. So retirees were included in the amount spent. But now we're taking them out, and that's a pretty big difference.
I would say go back and ask for the 7,000.
Yeah.
If not enough, I guess. Yes, that's, I agree.
Census?
Just remind you guys, we, we said 567 was the budget, we didn't say 567 was the budget without retirees.
Well, and I will say that my number on page 19, or the budget of, whatever, close to 567, 560 does not include retirees or Kim Surwicke.
So what you're saying is if, if you include the retirees, which I'm one, then we come in under budget for the rest of the city?
Include them on.
Well, what, what, okay, our budget is, is 567?
Well, that was the number we, we made the motion on, 567.
Because that's what we paid in 2018 for all people on Wellmark, and that included the retirees and the chamber.
Okay, and, uh, so a retiree with a, a spouse is paying about $15,000 a year, right?
Right.
So that doesn't come out of your budget, it comes out of retirees. Does that put us under the numbers, or? I guess I'm kinda.
No, she already took you guys out of it, right? You already took them out of it.
Yeah, I mean, when, when we were doing the 2020 budget, I was told to take the 2018 rates, so it would have been the July 1 of 2018 renewal rate. That is what I did, and that budget number is, does not include retirees, and it does not include the chamber. And that total budget number was 606, as shown on page 19, on total health of 606, which would include direct pay. That's the budget number, it does not include retirees.
Talking two totally different sets of numbers, because when we said we want 567, we're basing that off of number X. Number X was 567, that the city paid for Wellmark, and out of that number, then it actually went lower because Kim and the retirees reimbursed the city. So we're saying 567 with retirees, and now we're saying 573 without retirees. So we're, we're, we're manipulating the numbers.
We would have to go back and look at the number of employees that had family coverage, single coverage, employee spouse in 2018 as compared to today. If you wanted to do that, that number's gonna change.
Happy with this number, and I didn't, in my mind, I did not take into account direct pay. I was only concerned with the health insurance premiums, in my mind, I don't know what everybody else was thinking.
So the number you're happy with is?
The 567, which is what we made the motion on, am I correct on that? Now, we said budget, Dana is right, that is correct, we said budget. In my mind, that was not everything, that was just the premium, so if you guys want something else, I'm fine with that.
Claire, I understand you're right Barb, but you're fine with 567.
Not including the retirees number. Because if we include the retirees, like Dave was just talking, 15,000 times three, that's 45 plus seven, now we're 52 over budget, if we compare them to the way that the 18 numbers were brought forward.
The number's based on what Christina said, that they're not included.
And that's moving away from the grandfather?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Uh-uh.
Just depends.
I think we could probably keep it.
Christina, how many, how many of the employees currently pay the 5%?
We currently have 12 that pay the 5% and four of them that pay a step premium, or the step, year one, year two, year three.
So when we factor all those in, where are we at? Is that factored into the budget?
That's what that number is on that estimate of 573. That factors all of that in.
So when you go back and get your quotes, Casey, I mean, we, we potentially could be looking at moving from the grandfather.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, yeah, if you are trying to get to that, that's where it's gonna have to come from. I don't think they will even entertain it on our current business that we have. I think it's gonna be in that midsize margin where they'll maybe entertain, only taking us out of dollars.
Okay.
So then it would be, would be moving away from the grandfather, yeah.
And I would support that, Barbara, if that answers your question.
So Christina, if some are already paying the 5%, then this really wouldn't affect them if we go with the 5%? So they're already paying it?
No, I mean...
Oh, that's a wellness thing?
I guess I would recommend you get the committee back together and have the employees discuss on what they want. Do they want to pay the 5%? Do they not? Do they want to mess with the deductible? Do they not? If they choose to go to 5%, then I would say everybody just pays 5% and we don't do the wellness plan tracking thing that we're doing right now. That's why those people are paying the 5%. So, there's options there, but I really think the committee and the employees need to come back with some options and, and different things that we can present to you guys to look at.
It's our deadline.
But there too, I feel like we would need the council. I think we should come up with options and present to the employees. Like, we've met with them. There was two of us, and how many employees, I, I feel like we, we got a good ranking system here. If we come up with a, some different options and then let the employees vote, or survey, so to speak.
I would rather see a quick survey than putting employees in the middle of making that kind of a decision. I'd rather have it be a majority rather than on a few people's heads.
So what's the timeframe?
June 15th is our cutoff.
What do we need to do to get this Medica quote? I mean, what specifically do we need to get you?
Medica, as far as, as far as I know, and I'm concerned right now, we don't need anything from them. We're just, it's just a waiting game for them to turn the corner around. UHC is the, is we've, we've had missing information. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's UHC. Yeah.
Is that something we can ask to be done tomorrow, or how long a timeframe is expected for the paperwork?
If you, I would hope you could turn it around in one day. I mean, when it, you know, when it's just general information, who you are, where you're from, and a signature, you know?
And if we can't, we just move away from it. And if people won't fill out the form, then we just, it's not an option.
If we're gonna do another survey, then I think we need to put some numbers on it and not just say, you're gonna pay a premium, you know? Again, that scares people, and I understand that, so let's give them some numbers. If you're single or, you know, married, this is what it roughly would be. You can't say for sure, but roughly.
Does the council care where the 7,000 comes from? Meaning, so on, on this, this is an idea. So on the, on your buydown, what if you increased that? The, you know what I mean? Or, I shouldn't say the increase, that you decreased the buydown, because it doesn't affect every, and, and again, I, I don't want to alienate the ones that it affects, but it doesn't affect everybody. You, you know what I'm, you know what I mean? You know what I'm getting at? I don't know if that's...
I think that could be an option that you two take back to the committee and...
Direct pay's out of the equation.
Direct pay's out of the equation.
Okay, okay.
Because if we take premiums and direct pay, we're under budget.
We're under budget.
Okay.
But we don't want to talk about direct pay.
Okay.
So it's just premiums. I just...
Okay.
Okay, so what do we know?
Were you gonna get that?
Survey to make up the 7,000, can you just take the 7,000 divided by 36 employees? And that's...
No. The premiums are different.
But just for a ballpark. So you're talking 194 a year, you're talking 16, $17 a month.
Well, do you two have enough direction to go back with the committee and do the survey and get it done, like, within a week, because we're under the crunch now?
We didn't have anything to do with the survey, Brian, just sent that out to all employees.
But I'm asking you two now, I mean, do we have enough direction tonight?
I ran those questions by the committee.
Right, right. But I'm saying, we can't do the survey. I think we're under the gun with the timetable right now, that that survey just needs to go out, A or B. I don't really know what we're gonna be able to do back in a small group discussion about it. That's all I'm saying.
Because I think if we take our top three and know that, stick with these and give them options that fit within these, I think we're good.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Because this is what, I think if we take this, these top three rankings, I could be wrong, but Brian, don't you think if we take these three and give them options, like an A or B option, saying that, respect these, then I think, and then just go from there?
Dana, did you, did you just say the 7,000 divided by 36 was like? Then pre-tax, I like, Paul, I mean, I think of getting back to what Paul said earlier, pre-tax, that you're down to 13, you know, whatever, $12 maybe a month.
Can we do that? What Casey was just saying, what mayor made a comment about, was it pre-tax? Like $12 a month or something like that? That would be obviously a lot cheaper than $100 or 5%, depending on what plan you're on, if you just did the pre-tax or whatever.
I'm just saying, I think that may, I mean, if you're looking for a, a quick 7,000, you know, I'll, I'm gonna go back, I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow, but I'm going, that, to me, would seem to be pretty reasonable, to be able to keep your current plan. And, again, throw it through the pre-tax, you're gonna lower it even a little, I mean, it's not, we're not talking huge dollars here by any means, but...
I don't care how we do it. Doesn't matter to me.
I still think we should follow through on the other carriers. I think it would just be wrong to not look at two other carriers because of some paperwork. It could come in even under this, and we have no issue to address, so I, I think that we can take this as a course of action, but I think we need to see those other numbers. I think we're really wrong by not at least looking.
Those open network, those other ones?
Yes.
Oh, well, then we should, yeah. Then that would be even. Okay.
I'm hoping so, Tim. I, you know, once it leaves our, we, we try to, we try to lean on them as much as we can, but it's, once it leaves our office, it's, you know, and I think, I think going forward, that process, if we're, if it's something that's gonna happen every year, it needs to start earlier. You know, the application process has to start earlier than it, than it does. We waited till, you know, we wait till the renewal comes in, which is April 1. Okay, and we get the, we get the renewal in, okay, and then we, we should maybe start the, just do the applica, I mean, I know it's maybe a pain, although we did get it down to one app this year, which I, was good. But, you know, that's something maybe in the future, we need to just get ahead of it even more. Maybe even March, yeah, March, or just to have that portion done. And then, once, once, because carriers will, they don't want to take, they don't want to give you rates 90 days in advance, really. Due to obvious reasons, because health can change within that group and...
I think that should be an expectation going forward, that we started earlier.
So like, how early this year did you get us the paperwork, so that we can back that up next year?
We had the renewal in on, on, I believe it was April 6, I think it was. The renewal was in the 31st. I got the renewal here to the city on 31st of March. That's when I got it. And I believe it was the 6th of April that we had the application and stuff here.
Like, seven weeks, and you still don't have some apps back?
I don't know. I'm just...
Talking out loud, but I don't know that starting it earlier is gonna...
Well, I'm just, my point is, is that inevitably, that stuff happens. It just does. You wouldn't think it would, but it does. And it just would buy us more time. And we would hopefully, we would maybe get down to like where we are today and going, hey, we gotta figure something out.
My suggestion would be that we ask Casey to find $7,000 someplace, get to that number, and then we look at those other two plans, since they're open network. Our employees find that very important, I think. And then we make a decision.
Yep. Don't drag it out of you.
No, so if we could do it next week, that would be ideal. And I think if we could stay with open network, not make much of a change cost-wise to the employees, same benefits, I think they'll be happy. If we put in place a structure that everybody knows how it's going to work from now on, I think that will give them some peace of mind too, it would mean. So, we could, I don't know how we'd do that, but, you know, so, okay?
Yep.
Census?
Yes.
Any other business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn at 6 o'clock. Motion second, Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parsons.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Casey.